Does this go on TV? Once we call? Calling all councilors. Where are you? Okay, I gotta go get the rest of my team. We're just checking the cameras there, team. We may have action. I'm waiting for the thumbs up from Richard. I'm just wait, I'm waiting for, uh, Richard said we're not in our seats according to the cameras. We disappeared, no, we disappeared, so they're just checking that, I'm just waiting for him to give us a thumbs up.
Remember to say hi to Tali, I was starting to, uh...
Thank you. And also Jennifer.
Jennifer. I don't want to close the question.
As someone who's called Joanne all the time, I can probably, uh, all about name pronunciation.
Sorry, I should know better.
We're not on camera. That's what I say.
Should we go without the stream?
We're not streamed, we're not streamed. Technical issue.
No, no, we're not, but, um, yeah, I mean, I would think for this meeting, because if something
Right, yep. So the clerk gets here. Right, yeah, okay.
John, will it be recorded such that it'll be verbal afterwards or not?
It won't, if we don't set this up. There's no obligation to do so, but then we don't get, uh, it's not on Dodgers and it's not on web stream.
We just, uh, we should just take that, uh, around the arch to understand that, uh, we're not going on. So members' comments will...
Right, so...
Unless, unless you want us to try to...
No.
Okay.
No, 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 no.
How long?
No, no. Okay, so I'll call the, uh, meeting to order. Oh, okay. I'm gonna do that again. Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting to order, and I wanna say welcome to everyone to December 19th, uh, meeting of the St. John City Common Council, and this will be the final meeting for 2022. Uh, first item, city clerk.
Uh, thank you, your worship, first item is the land acknowledgement.
Okay, I'm the reader this evening. This is to acknowledge that the land on which the city of St. John, Mennequist, is situated is the traditional territory of the Wolushtewicke, Malacite. The Wolushtewicke and Malacite, along with their indigenous neighbors, the Migma, and the Migma and the Migma, the Pesto Tomacari signed peace and friendship treaties with the British Crown in the 1700s that protected their rights to lands and their resources. Let us pause and reflect. Okay, city clerk, next item, please.
Uh, next we have the national anthem.
Okay, uh, city clerk, next item.
Uh, next item is the approval of the agenda with one addition from committee of the whole. That's for an amendment to the MOU with Cook aquaculture, that would become item 8.1 on the agenda.
Uh, councillor Stewart and councillor Killen on the question? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried, next item.
Uh, next is the disclosures of conflict of interest, if there are any.
Not seeing any, so on to the next item, please.
Uh, next item is the consent agenda.
Deputy, over to you.
Thank you, your worship, I would move, uh, 4.1.
Moving 4.1, second, uh, councillor Killen, on the question? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried, next item, city clerk?
Uh, next? Next item, your worship, is members' comments.
Members' comments. Councillor Sullivan, over to you first for your two-minute flash dance.
Uh, just for council and the folks at home, um, as your member on, on the St. John Energy Commission, I have the privilege to help direct some of their donation money at the end of the year. So just for everybody's interest, uh, the following great St. John organizations are gonna get a donation from your energy utility. It's Top Corner Hockey Interaction School for Performing Arts, Beemy Kids, the Teen Resource Center, Canadian Mental Health Association in St. John, Crescent Valley Resource Center, Pulse Avenue B, St. John Waterloo Village Association, and the St. John Theater Company, uh, from your St. John Energy. And also just happy holidays to everybody, um, along the lines of the Canadian Mental Health Association. Just please, please be aware, uh, that not everybody has a happy time at this holiday season, so keep an eye out for your neighbors and friends, uh, and support each other, and support each other through health as well, wear your masks, sneeze into your elbow pit, um, and make sure, uh, that you have a safe and healthy holiday time and be kind to one another, thank you.
Okay, uh, deputy?
Thank you, your worship, I just wanna echo those remarks from councillor Sullivan. You know, this time of year, uh, it's, uh, it's a happy time for a lot of people and not so happy for others. We've got a lot of illnesses going around, but in spite of all of that, I do wish everybody a very merry Christmas and a, and a happy holidays, and, and the best of health and luck in the, in the new year. And, uh, we wanna make sure too, that, you know, with the weather that's coming, uh, schools will be closed, so take the extra caution on the streets when the kids are out of school, and, uh, wish you all well, thank you.
Thank you, deputy, uh, councillor Killen, over to you.
Thank you, your worship, just really quickly, um, I saw this, uh, term this year that I thought was very appropriate with regards to what you're both saying is have a gentle holiday. So, don't, uh, yeah, like, there's no reason to be super happy or super sad or anything, uh, about that, it's just a more matter of, like, resting and recuperating for the year ahead, and there's a lot of people in St. John who've been working so, so hard to change and move and make this place a better place, and I think we all deserve a little bit of respite from that, and, uh, I wish everyone a very gentle holiday, thank you.
Thank you, councillor. That's it for members' comments, so I will echo that as well, and I will say that Christmas can be an emotional time for a lot of people. Um, we think about all the people that aren't here that should be, but we also see all of the little people that are here that weren't here years ago, so it's a, it's an interesting time. So if you celebrate Christmas, have a wonderful celebration, and if you don't, enjoy the few days of respite that you will have, as councillor Killen said. And, uh, it is a, it is a time when I find, this is actually my favorite week, the week before Christmas, because I find that's the time when people, really, there's a lot going on, and there's, uh, people tend to be a little bit happier, so it's kind of a nice time, this time of year. Things are sort of starting to wind down as we get towards Christmas, except for, I shouldn't say this, but there are some people that are probably just getting their Christmas shopping started, it's not me. But, anyway, so I do wish everyone a happy, there you go! I do wish, wanna wish everyone happy holidays. Okay, uh, city clerk, uh, next item.
Thank you, your worship, next on the agenda is item 6.1, it's a report from Growth Committee for 2023 Neighborhood Service Agreements.
Okay, councillor Killen, as the chair of Growth, this is over to you for an intro.
Yes, so on the gentleness of the holiday right now, um, I'm really pleased to bring the following item before council tonight. It's a report brought to you from the Growth Committee endorsing the priority neighborhood associations, association service agreement renewals. Uh, these renewals are for the seven associations who serve residents living within the city's five priority neighborhoods. These neighborhood associations provide vital programs and services to help improve residents' quality of life. Similar to community center renewals, these agreements are recommended to be extended to a four-year term to support stability for the service providers and enable leveraging of funding. One-year agreements are proposed for Waterloo Village, so they can become incorporated as a non-profit in 2023, and for around the block, so the city, uh, sorry, so the city can conduct an evaluation of the program with the community in 2023. These agreements provide a bulk increase of funding for all providers. The agreements have improved reporting and the engagement with city staff in order to evaluate success, sorry, success moving forward. Community engagement provisions are also being recommended in the agreement to identify any service gaps in the programming. The community engagement measure will aid in directing the associations and service delivery for our priority neighborhoods. These agreements do have provisions in place that enable amendments in the contracts if further enhancements are identified. So we're providing flexibility and also room for input over the next bit of time, but also the stability of staying with those four-year agreements if needed. Um, so I would recommend the staff, uh, sorry, I would recommend the motion for a recommendation, uh, moving forward.
Okay, so councillor Killen's, uh, moving the recommendation, councillor, deputy seconding it. Thank you, councillor Killen, you did, uh, did a good job, uh, doing the pricey of that, those four years, a win-win for everyone. Uh, councillor Killen has, uh, or, sorry, councillor Harris has a question, so over to you, councillor.
Uh, sorry, your worship, not a question, but just more or less a comment, just... The, uh, the conversation at Growth Committee was pretty robust around, uh, what it is that we want to set for a direction for, uh, our community centers. So just, just to kind of give some of that credence to the colleagues around the table who have expressed concern over things like, you know, the establishment of a better presence at city level on the east side, uh, the establishment for a better funding model for our community centers that allows them to really dig deep, um, you know, one of our priorities is to belong, is the belong category, and we have a lot under the, the vibrant and prosperous, um, pieces of this 10-year strategic plan, and we really do see that so much of that's gonna flow through our community centers, so there's a lot in these agreements that are gonna give opportunity for future allocations and decisions to happen. So this isn't, uh, I guess all that to say is, these are our baseline, that four-year opt agreement is gonna give that stability they need, but we're gonna continue those conversations at the Growth Committee level to try to work out something, uh, unique and to really deliver on some of the conversations that happen around this table, so, yeah.
Thank you. Uh, I will let the team know that we have David Dobelstein from Growth here this evening to answer any questions, and also Commissioner Hamilton is online, uh, so I'm going over to councillor Redd, one next.
Thank you, mayor, I appreciate that, and I appreciate, uh, your words, councillor Harris, it's great. I, uh, did get to attend your Growth meeting, and I, I've talked to staff a fair amount about this item, and I'm very confident, um, that staff are gonna be looking to see, you know, what kind of engagement, uh, that they need to have in order to push this needle forward. We certainly do need a community development officer, I think that's quite clear, um, since I've been sending people over to the north end to get assistance. The other thing is, is there does seem to be quite a gap when it comes to programming, for example, but, uh, those between the age of 18 and 59 don't have any sort of community service programming. Um, the Field House has quite a few programs in place, and, you know, if we look at this holistically for the last five years, if the Field House, and I'm not sure how much went to the Forest Hills, uh, school prior to that, they were getting $95,000 a year at the Field House, if the same was, um, going to Forest Hills prior to that, plus the money going out to the Hope Center, that equals about $700,000 for Ward Four. Um, the remainder of the 4.5 million invested over the last five years equates to about, like, $3.5 million for the other three areas of the city, and I'm not begrudging any area of the city, they certainly needed that, those supports, so I, I, I'm fully there with the supports there.
Councillor, do you have a question on the service agreements?
No, I just, I just really have this, this as a comment, I've been public about it, so...
I'm just trying to keep us on, on, on topic.
Yeah, no, it's fine, I just wanna make sure that I just mentioned that I know that staff are looking at it, trying to figure out where the gaps are, so I've had a lot of calls from the public about this too. Um, so let's just be patient, they have to know where, where the gaps are to be able to fill them the right way, we need to do it the right way, going forward.
Thank you, councillor. Uh, councillor Sullivan?
Thanks, your worship, uh, thanks to the Growth Team and to the staff who look after these files. Um, this is a real testament to all of these organizations, because these organizations have been doing work in the city for many years now, and every one of them's, I think every one of them started with a group of people sitting in a room saying, how can we help our neighborhood, uh, the youth who are at risk, um, these clientele, how can we help improve their lives in St. John? And that group of people built the organization to the point where the city can get on board with the service contract and help fund them, um, and give them advice and help them along the way. So my, my question is actually this, it has nothing to do with these folks, but if there's a group listening out there that's working in St. John, um, you know, we've had other ones pop up that we don't have service agreements with, we do work over at Dominion and Tucker Parks, for example, but if there's that group out there and says, you know, we wanna work in our neighborhood, we've got a group of people who are engaged, we need a little bit of help moving to the next step, who can they contact?
City manager? Oh, no, I should send that over to, I guess, uh, Mr. Dobelstein?
Through your worship to the councillor, certainly our community services team is equipped to take those calls. We have a full team, uh, who work with all the different community agencies, uh, in the various neighborhoods and wards. Uh, and I would say there's different stages of evolution between these neighborhood associations, and we have some who are, have been around for years and have, uh, have their own community centers, and very well-established, uh, organization of governance, and others who are really nascent grassroots organizations. Um, we work with the different groups depending on whatever levels, and we can provide advice on what they need to do, certainly as next steps. And I guess the other thing too, I would say, is the neighborhoods, the neighborhood associations tend to all want different things and have different priorities, and it tends to work better if they're telling us, city, what they want for their own neighborhood and their own community. So certainly they can reach out to our community services staff, and we can provide them with the context that they need to take the next level of evolution, and certainly we always encourage our associations to get in touch with their ward councillor as well, about where they wanna go as a community wants supports, they're looking for from the city.
So ward councillor's a good spot, or 658-4455, and ask for our community development team?
Sure, yep.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Dobelstein, and councillor, Eric councillor Sullivan, councillor Hickey, over to you.
Thanks, your worship, very quick question for clarification. This isn't, like, we will have a subsequent conversation on enhancements of our community centers on a later day, correct? Because I know, I know there's a lot of a conversation there, uh, especially when it comes to where we, where we grow our community centers, so, uh, but this is just approval of the service agreements.
Correct.
But that conversation is coming, the enhancement one.
Yes, councillor Killen, over to you, here's your chairman of...
I just wanna speak to that, actually, 'cause I, I think it's a really good question, and I think that's why there's been a lot of flexibility left in this conversation, right? Like, we're trying to make sure that they can come back to the table, and we were, uh, asked that at Growth, and y'all can watch it if you need to, um, but, uh, Jen Reed, uh, and her colleagues came back and said, listen, we are creating this, uh, to make sure you can come back and ask for more, uh, which I think is actually very forward-thinking, very progressive of them, and so, uh, I think I'm really proud of staff for, you know, doing the art of the possible in this, and saying, uh, we recognize there's work to be done, but we also wanna provide stability.
Thank you. All right, I guess that's it for questions and comments, so I will, we have, we have a, uh, the motion's on the floor, so I will call the question, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carried unanimously, thank you so much, and thanks to Growth Committee. Okay, uh, city clerk, next item.
Uh, next, your worship, is another report from Growth Committee, item 6.2 on your agenda, and it's community center service agreements.
Back over to you, uh, Chair Killen.
I feel like councillor Sullivan with the budget season right now, getting to hold the whole stage here. Um, but, uh, as we all know, ensuring that our community centers are made whole in the new year is very important, so I appreciate, uh, council being here tonight to have this special meeting because of that. Uh, so, uh, this is a report brought to you from the Growth Committee, again, endorsing the community center service agreement renewals for our six primary community center service providers. City staff have worked diligently with our community partners to generate the recommendations in this report. The renewal agreements provide standardized annual increases, uh, in funding across all providers, which is incredibly wonderful, uh, which, again, extending contract terms of four years to support stability and, uh, enable leveraging of funding. Uh, there is a one-year agreement proposed for the YMCA at the Milledgeville Community Center, so the city can conduct a needs assessment with the community at the usage of that center, which is just a little, little bit of a housekeeping issue. Uh, the four-year terms also demonstrate the city of St. John's ongoing commitment to the residents' quality of life. We really know that our growth, uh, and the community centers are intertwined. The agreements have improved monthly reporting and engagement with city staff in order to evaluate success moving forward. Community engagement provisions are also being recommended in the agreements to identify any service gaps. There's a lot more, um, conversations happening, which I'm really proud to, to say is, is ongoing. The community engagement measure will ensure that the vital services at the community centers are addressing the community's needs and ensuring consistency in service delivery in our neighborhoods. These agreements do not, uh, do have provisions in place that, uh, enable amendments, again, we are open to talking, uh, if the contracts are further, or if further enhancements are identified, so I would move the recommendation based on staff.
Take a second, or councillor Hickey? Uh, councillor, on the question? Oh, no, only questions, I don't see any questions, so on the question, I'll call the question, all in favor? Opposed? Carried unanimously again, thank you so much. Next item, city clerk.
Uh, thank you, your worship, next, uh, we have the item that came from committee of the whole. Um, this is for a second amendment to MOU with Cook aquaculture, and, uh, the resolution for this would read that the city entered into an amendment number two to the memorandum... And, uh, the resolution for this would read that the city entered into an amendment number two to the memorandum of understanding with Cook Aquaculture, Inc., in the form presented to committee of the whole at its December 19th, 2022 meeting for potential land transaction, and that the mayor and clerk be authorized to execute the said amendment number two to the memorandum of understanding.
Thank you. I'll need councillor Stewart and councillor Lowe on the question? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? All right, that looks like that that's it for our, for us tonight. Before we sign off, I do wanna thank staff and say, uh, I hope you have a nice, quiet few days off. Uh, it's well-deserved. And, uh, we'll see you back here, well, I guess, I don't know, but before 2023, I'm sure. Anyway, I, I do wanna thank staff because they've worked hard all year. We've had a lot of things going on this year, and, uh, there's been, like I said, every item that comes to council has hours, some of them have hundreds of hours of work in them before they get here to us, so, um, they do a lot of, a lot of tough work. So, uh, congratulations on a few days off, and we'll see you, see you soon. So I'll guess I'll call for councillor Lowe's got his hand up for the motion to adjourn, and councillor Hickey, of course, on the question. All in favor? Opposed? Thank you so much. Okay, is that the record? Is that the record?